Yeah, there was an ordinance moved and approved to rescind the ordinance of October 6, 2015, I believe the ordinance number was 2015-0-45, which approved a number of text amendments to the legacy code, the Village of Tinley Park. The ordinance also directed that those ordinance be considered as soon as possible, or excuse me, those amendments be considered as soon as possible by your planning commission after all proper notice in accordance with law is given.
So at this time, it has not been, at this, from this meeting, from what you guys voted on, it is not commercial required again? It is still commercial preferred at this moment?
Their act of rescission, our interpretation of it, is that the ordinance putting into law, all of those text amendments are now repealed. Okay. Some, I don't want to go too far into it, and we're in litigation regarding that, but that's, that's our interpretation.
So our interpretation is it is back to commercial required first floor?
But, and it's going back to the planning development for hearing on that to resolve.
Planning commission?
Planning, yeah, I said, planning commission, sorry.
And that will be Thursday?
No, it has to be noticed, so as soon as we can get the notice.
Can we make sure we do that correctly? All right, and, just another question, not really a question, more of a statement for you Mayor Seaman, I understand that it is your call on your appointments, but when there's better communication between you guys up there, I think that makes for better government as a whole. I don't think that these games you guys play between each other, fighting back and forth, is being, is a very effective way to get proper appointments done. Common sense, from a, I manage people in my, in my work, common sense is, informed people are happier people and you guys work better together, so, I don't know, my recommendation is to actually talk to each other.
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Andy Zaher, I'm with Caledonia Town Homes. This issue is just a comment that I want to bring up and be on record with, with the village board. We were having some issues and actually questions with the planning commission being in a little bit of a disarray lately. We had some questions that our management company was trying to get answers from the village. I did finally talk to Paula recently, we were playing a little phone tag back and forth, but the issues that we have, I don't want to get into specifics, and I hopefully will be able to iron that out with Paula on easements and some drainage and different things like that with the Great Escape. But, the biggest thing is if we can communicate, it'll solve half the issues that these, for the last few months, so, I just want to go on.
Great, please, you know, feel free to talk to Paula tonight while you're here.
Sir, if I may, I sat through a meeting this, this morning, actually, this very topic came up, there was extensive discussion about it, and I know that Paula and her staff, as well as the village engineers are working diligently, diligently to resolve the issues that you and your homeowners association have.
Okay, and then Bob just had, who's with me, he has a couple of specific things just to bring up to the board on that issue.
Certainly, please.
Hi, I'm Bob Katz at Caledonia Town Homes. Earlier last week, I stopped at Village Hall, I spoke to the water department to have pumping from the Great Escape to the Caledonia Pond stopped. It was stopped, and it was stopped quickly, so for that, I'd like to thank you. I also stopped at the planning department to see and have explained the pipes and drains from Great Escape. I was told that only an engineer can provide that. One was supposed to call me, nothing happened. And finally, from pumping, from the water that was pumped from the Great Escape to our pond, there's a lot of sludge, muck, papers that blew in, and that was pumped from the one pond to our pond, and the silt fence that they, that they constructed is blown down in areas, and it didn't and doesn't stop anything. I'd just like that on record, and I'd like to know, or find out eventually, who's going to clean this up and who's going to pay. Thank you.
Again, I would just, just state that, that conversation was discussed in our DRT meeting this morning.
Yeah, I just wanted to get everything on record.
No, I, we're going to get those answers to you right away, and I'm not certain if you're going to be sticking around, but certainly probably give you an update on what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Toni Cusimano, and I just have something that is not on the agenda, but I want to bring to your attention, and just curious on where we stand. In reading this South Town Star over the weekend, I saw that the car wash that is just west of the high school here is applying for a gaming license in addition to a liquor license, and I wanted to know and let you know that I, as a resident, and many others are opposed to having alcohol in a car wash that is not necessary within a two-block radius of these kids that attend this school and are on these grounds all hours of the day and night. I don't think it's necessary, and I sure hope it doesn't get passed. And again, we don't need another gaming facility in town. I think going with the new marketing company that you're inquiring about, maybe we can move beyond bigger and better horizons besides gaming. It's not going to just bring great positive things to our community, there's not enough police in our community to support the things that can result, the negative things that can result from that, and I don't think it's necessary. And one more thing that was on the agenda for item number 10, we're approving additional housing when we have how many homes in foreclosure? Again, we're building, and we can't even bring people in. Where are we going with this idea? So if you want to bring people in, maybe let's get the foreclosed homes that are sitting everywhere vacant cleaned up, get on the banker or the realtor, whoever has those homes behind, and tell them to start moving it. Maybe bring an ordinance for that, instead of having grass that's yea-high and awnings are falling, and it's terrible how the community's looking. And I know that because I walk in the community and I see it. You guys just drive by every day, you don't notice it. Walk around your blocks and you'll see a whole lot more.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
I somewhat have a contrasting view to the woman prior. My name's Michael Bernardi, I've lived here in Tinley Park for the past 38 years. My wife and I owned a VIP coin laundry, going on 11 years in business here in Tinley Park. I'm here tonight to voice my support for issuing Class E liquor license to individual businesses whose primary operations are outside the normal procedure of selling alcohol and food, thus enabling their business to obtain video gaming license from the state, for example, as she mentioned, Park Hill Car Wash. The exception I do have is that the rules need to be applied with fairness and logic to all applicants for the Class E liquor license. Do not exclude my business because I feel my 3,000 square feet should qualify me for a license, then give another business a license because it has 2,000 of 3,000 square feet roped off dedicated for video gaming. How this 2,000 square foot rule is applied is a matter of semantics. Is the fruit a tomato or a tomato? No matter what, it's the same fruit. I'm just asking you to apply the rules fairly to everybody. And if it's no, it's no, and if it's yes, it's yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else get a comment?
Evening, gentlemen, just curious if there was any updates on the investigation status right now, and if we have gotten any feedback from the sheriff's department on this, I mean, we're probably going on how many weeks of this now?
It's been...
Probably four weeks.
I think it's at least been since Easter.
Yeah, at least four weeks.
There hasn't been any updates to me at all.
I have not gotten any information.
Or any questions for that matter.
Okay, and what is the reporting structure that was set up for this coming back? I know this was kind of murky if you go back and you read the ordinance, we did nominate and state that, but we didn't set up a specific reporting structure, and I'm just curious, now that we have the new village attorney here, I would imagine we would need some sort of structure put around that, something that both updates you guys on the board and then updates us as the public.
The reporting structure on the, the status of the sheriffs?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the formal ordinance, so, but I'll take your word for it, there's nothing concrete in there. I just know that, again, we're not controlling the investigation.
That's, that's well understood, we know that, yeah.
And there's not, we have no authority over the sheriff's office to tell us anything.
No, no, right.
I think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, it's asked about at every meeting, you know, I think that's a good way to do it, but I, nothing in, nothing in stone, it's something we can think about, but, I mean, until we get the report, other than they talk to a couple people or they ask for certain documents, it's what, we're kind of...
Yeah, that, yeah, that part of it, we, we know, I'm just saying is that now we're, as this goes on, we don't have a reporting structure there, so we, being the public, don't have a view into what's going to happen, and I imagine you guys are sitting there with the same question, saying, who gets the report? So, I'm just saying, if we put this out in the public and it's open, it's stated, it's documented, then there's no questions.
The report's going to come to the village as a whole, I don't know specifically who would get it.
Well, there you go, yeah.
Good point, and, you know, it'll probably go to the clerk's office, I'd imagine, or the village manager's office.
I think it's, it's the elected officials, and again, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that they have to report within a certain amount of days. I do know that they've occasionally called my administrative assistant and asked for documents here and there, so I do know that they're, they're actively...
Oh, we know the investigation's active, yeah, it's just more of a question of, if we put this out in the open and communicate it to the public, you know, saying, once the report comes in, there's some sort of reporting structure there that you guys put it in the Tinley Junction, you want to put it on the website, something like that, that clearly states it, that nobody has any questions then of when it comes in, because there's nothing in that ordinance that says you guys just bury it. And that, from the public's point of view, that's kind of worrisome. So if, if there was something that guaranteed us as the public that there is nothing impropriety could be even guessed on your part, there's no question, no issue. Now, if everybody says, oh, we'll, sure, we'll take care of it, and nothing's ever done, everybody in the public is still left questioning, what's up with the report?
Mr. Ridgeway, I think I made the commitment that as soon as we get that report, we'll release it. So long as there's no litigation involved, which I hope there won't be, it, it can go out in its entirety.
Okay, so, do we have to put that in an ordinance or something, that it's guaranteed, or just that's good enough?
It's a promise, it's a, it's a promise that we may...
Okay, just asking, you know, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well, first, I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Suggs on his appointment, and I wanted to, I wanted to thank Attorney Connolly for giving me a copy of the draft. I just wanted to ask about item eight, each meeting agenda will have a designated public comments section provided. This is the only time comments from the public are allowed unless called upon by the chairperson or during a public hearing. Now, does that mean we're going to retain the public comments section when items are up for adoption? Is that still going to be, can we have that codified in the final draft version?
Yeah, it's a good point, we discussed it in committee, I think that's something this board wants to retain. How we go about doing that?
I would ask that, that we, I would strongly recommend that we keep that, because, you know, because, yeah, because if, if there's something up, you know, it's too late for us to comment it afterwards, so, you know, that's why I would like, because, I mean, we were doing that now, and I would like to retain that, so I would just, I would just like to ask for that.
I think the board feels the same way.
Okay, thank you very, Mayor Seaman, thank you.
Hi, I just want to commend the appointment of trustee Suggs here now. I've had a chance to know him for past five years, he's a tremendous individual, who's very talented, and I know he'll do a great job for the voice of Tinley Park, and also be a true independent for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer some words of encouragement here for the village board. Tonight, I'd like to encourage the village board to include in the agendas going forward a follow-up to the previous village board's meeting, you know, which includes a quick recap on the answers to questions that were placed in the parking lot of unanswered questions from the previous village board meeting. I encourage the board to capture more detailed information in the readout of the bills that are approved. I encourage the village board to give careful consideration of the public comment policy to include what expectations are for members of the village board during and after the public's comments. Who is responsible for documenting and following up on the public speaker's suggestions? I encourage the village board to do a quick self-examination on how our village shares and manages knowledge. I encourage the village board to institute a cost-saving center of excellence knowledge repository, be it a shelf, a room, a database, a suggestion box on the corner of someone's desk. The agency that was hired tonight, I have a lot of questions about that for the rebranding of Tinley Park, somehow or other, I guess I missed out on that RFQ, and, and this seems kind of typical with a lot of the items, you know, by the time they hit the agenda, they're being voted on so quickly that we're not even having a chance to, you know, speak about it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think we, we had a chance to really do public comment on the rebranding initiative before the vote. Did we, or was there any voting from the public, or any input? No?
There was, it was part of the budget that was discussed.
Discussed at a meeting in February also.
In committees, it was public presentation. It was the budget, finance.
Well, I, I think that it's just part of the disturbing ongoing trend that we're outsourcing too much. I mean, the fact that this village board hired this agency to work on rebranding our village, it's an indictment against yourself that you either lack proficiency, or you lack interest in effectively sharing and managing knowledge about our village. And, and you just confirmed it earlier with your back and forth. So, you know, promoting our village brands, plural, certainly we can have more than one brand, I would hope, is an integral part of being a trustee, and the fact that our village board wants to outsource this function tells me that they just don't have very strong interest in this subject. At some point, you have to realize that if you don't want to deal with what you perceive as an uninteresting aspect of your job, then it's time to consider composing that letter of resignation. I, I, you know, with the arrangement of things, we, we appointed a trustee, but we didn't introduce him till later on, he has a marketing background, why couldn't we get some input from him on destination branding? Maybe it's not rocket science, maybe we have enough knowledge and skillsets within our own village, be it from board, staff, non-staff, residents, I mean, we're just not leveraging the talents that we have. I, I just can't help but thinking that we're just too quickly, oh, let's go hire someone to do it, let's go hire someone to do it, instead of taking a volunteer from every commission in the village and coming up with some leadership to lead this through, because, I mean, I, I looked at the details on that, and it just seems like you hired someone to kind of orchestrate things and give a couple of pep rallies. I mean, mo, most of the work is still coming from the village, right? I mean, you're still going to have volunteers and input from the village, so I, I just think that we need to do a better job on managing and sharing knowledge. I encourage the village staff to explore how to export views of any detailed electronic ledgers to be brought with the appropriate staff at board meetings. I encourage the village board to explore making permits and inspection fees more affordable, and look into examples of other towns and villages who have made permits and inspection fees more affordable, either via waivers and discounts that are applied and for what reasons, and then consider adopting such options to make permits and inspection fees more affordable. I encourage the village board to remember that an important part of your job is to be vigilant in ensuring that living in Tinley Park remains affordable for all residents. It is unacceptable that the village board is even considering raising permits and inspection fees and making it more expensive for senior citizens living on social security fixed incomes to comply with codes and, excuse me, municipal regulations for safety at a time when tickets and citations aren't being issued to unruly patrons of at least one fine local, of at least at one fine local establishment owned by someone who coincidentally donates to the mayor's political campaign. If the village board and mayor have no interest in remembering that keeping a town affordable is one of your most important responsibilities, then I would encourage these people to consider resigning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I've been speaking recently with Steve Tilton, and he was going to be here, so I was wondering, Dave, if you could shed some light on the questions I had in regards to the, the license?
About Dottie's?
Yeah, and what happened, what should have happened, just to correct from last meeting.
Sure, sure. Well, basically, the, with, with Dottie's, the, the village code, basically, there, the board did approve the liquor license for it?
Did not?
They did, they did. So, Steve, upon review of the code, basically determined that, you know, prior to the approval of the additional class license, the village, what, what the village is going to do going forward is actually not collect the application or payment for the video gaming license until all the appropriate liquor license was approved by the board. So, we haven't actually issued the liquor or the gaming license yet, but they've got to go through all the documentation now to be able to, to get that.
Okay, did he, so now we're going to not collect the 5,000 per the application fee, correct?
Well, they, no, they have to go through the whole process of correcting both the, you know, for the liquor license fee.
Okay, did he get an answer on why Durbin's did not have to pay or swear under oath, but Betty's Bistro had to give the 5,000?
I didn't, I didn't talk to him about Durbin's, so, Durbin's and Betty Bistro? No, I didn't talk to him about that.
The, the attorney mentioned in the one packet that you spoke of, Mr. Ray, about the, the OMA's comparing other towns and stuff. I think it's a great idea, but, to compare other towns, but the only thing I would ask is, we change it to 60 minutes, because if you look back at the meetings, the meetings are kind of winding down now, not the last one, but the one before, I think, was under 45. You could see the crowds are smaller. And we increase it to five to eight, and we make sure when there's a rebuttal, when someone answers a question, that that time doesn't count against you, that you get your, whatever, five to eight minutes yourself to speak, because like now, I come up to the podium and I ask Mr. Niemeyer a question that's eating into my time. So I don't know if that's something that, if the attorney would have any part of that, we need, if we could consider that?
Yeah, the board, the board can consider it. I, there was a draft talked about tonight, I know in the draft, it was 45 minutes, which I know we were originally talking 30, there were talks of 60, you know, we kind of went at 45. We have some tweaking to do to that policy, and it'll be back for the board, so, the board's going to have to approve it. If the board, I, I think as we left, it was direction to keep working on it, and if there are further comments from board members or suggestions, you know, give them to me and we'll incorporate them.
Okay, how do the board, you guys have any feelings on the time constraints?
Mike, I don't, I don't think we're going to be, I don't think if a situation is you're up here and you're into a topic and it takes you another minute, the chair would exercise discretion to allow you to finish your remarks. I mean, I don't know that we have to put a sand timer on when Dave starts answering your questions and say, oh, sorry, I used all your time. I mean, some of it's common sense, and, and I think we've shown that we're trying to allow you the opportunity to say everything you want to say, and I, I just think the rules are something that everybody has, that we probably should have had for a while, just to control the meeting so that we don't have situations where we have staff here till 11:30 at night, because, you know, I mean, if it's a burning issue and people really have things they need to talk about, you know, we're, we've stayed here and talked as long as we wanted to talk. But, but the rules are to, to try to control it so it's orderly and the process is fair to everybody.
Okay, well, thank you, if you, but if you feel that way about letting us talk, then maybe we should bump up the, the numbers a little bit, just to make sure that there is no time constraint, because if we did 60 minutes, I can't remember the last time we've had a meeting over 60 minutes, or people speaking more than, you know, five, six, seven, eight minutes. I think four is a little low, and I, 45 is a little low, because every meeting's not the same, there may be something that's really important and someone needs to discuss, so unfortunately, one meeting, you could come up and speak in, in a minute, next, a month from now, maybe you, you need your, you know, you need eight minutes because it's that important, and, you know, and there's rebuttal going back and forth, like Mr. Niemeyer, you know, he's speaking because he knows the answer. I called him, had it a couple days ago, we spoke, so that when I ask him the question, the answer's very easily at hand.
All right, well, thanks, I mean, your, your remarks are understood, we're still in the process of fleshing out what that's going to be.
Okay, the, the other thing, as far as using other towns as an example, just for the OMA, I think we need to incorporate that as a whole, we can't just pick and choose, I think, on what part of a town we're going to use. One of them is the salaries, for example. There's no one with the salaries in any of these towns that I looked at next to us that make anywhere near what we're paying out for these salaries. Just, Oak Lawn, their VM, and none of this is personal, it's just, it's just numbers, their VM's 157, their HR director's 100, their assistant administrative secretary's 54. You got Mokina, assistant village manager hired in 2003, after 13 years is up to 107,000. I think Mr. Mertens, when he left, was up to 133-plus benefits. Their police chief, 126,000. Secretary, been there 10 years, 44,000. I think we need to incorporate the whole town, not just pick and choose what works for ourselves, because these, if you guys, since you did this for the, for the OMA, I think you should, you should do the due diligence, as, like Mr. Pino keeps speaking, that, you know, we don't always get the full information. Well, if you're going to speak about the OMA, and you're going to compare other towns, you should start comparing the pensions. There's not one other town around us that's getting into 30-some thousands, you know, for their pension payment. You have, the police chief went up from 31,000 paid to his pension up to 46,000, that's a $15,000 increase. Our deputy chiefs, they got $15,000 increases. Our sergeants got $7,000 increases, one got 10. And we should also incorporate the, the use of cars, because I don't think anybody in any town gives out cars like we do. Everyone's driving around in cars. We should, we should, we should run it around, we should run it like a state business. Not everybody needs a car all the time. You have a car, it's at the, it's at the village hall, you need to go run, the guy runs out. Every single person doesn't need to have a car, and we would stop the out-of-town trips, the weekends. I think we need to incorporate the whole thing then, because we eliminated all these cars, we have, you know, and these pension payments are ridiculous. Who approves this, or who even, who vote, who determines that it should go from 31,000 to 45,000?
I'd let that question be answered, that's a fairly easy one.
Yeah, Mike, that, actually, the pension payments are, are basically from the state, they're mandated by the state, we have to basically pay based on what the state law is, and so, none of that actually is, is, is our decision, it's, it's, there's an actuary that, for police and fire, there is basically kind of a local actuary, a local actuary for police that will calculate it, and for IMRF, it's based on the state, so it's not really our, our calculation.
So the state told you that their, their pension should go up?
The state basically sets benefit levels at a certain amount, and so, there's an actuary that the police department uses that says to fund that amount, you've got to levy this amount, similarly for IMRF. IMRF is basically a state, essentially a state pension organization for all non-police and fire, and they basically tell us every year to make your pension payments, you've got to... got to levy X dollars," and we're required to do that. And all the benefit levels, they're all set by the state. We don't have any say in terms of what we pay in terms of pensions.
How about the village staff?
Well, that's, that's, any staff that gets pensions, that's, all those benefit levels are determined by the state.
So, whether they're unioned from the fire or the police?
It's nothing to do with whether they're unioned or non-unioned. It's just all, it's all state law, and it's part of which-
Dave, maybe we could discuss a little bit about the market study that we're going to do for-
Sure.
To kind of directly answer what he's-
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so, one of the things that was discussed, our committee, the whole meeting, was put in our budget this year, is that we're actually going to do an updated market study where we're going to look at comparable communities. Oak Lawn could be one of them, but ones we want to look at, basically, all of our non-union positions and do a survey to see where we're at in the market. So, that is something that we're actually going to hire. We're going to have an outside person to do it, you know, and make sure that it's obviously independent, and so, that's, that's something that we're going to be doing this calendar year.
Okay. Yeah, because-
Open Meetings Act?
Yeah, because the surrounding towns are nowhere near what we're paying. And, and the cars, I wish you guys, when you do your appointments, would revisit who deserves a car and who doesn't deserve a car, because I think there could be car sharing. We, we hand them out like Tic Tacs. We do. I, I see them, I see them on Fridays at the fuel pump, and then they're going away. I mean, I have to wait till Mr. Pierce, or to his replacements, but we should be checking, the staff should be checking the fuel consumptions. How much fuel is consumed, what's pumped into the cars on Fridays, and what's, what's pumped in on Mondays? There's several out of town. Have we ever looked into that?
I mean, we do have reports on the fuel, that's what you're asking.
Yeah. But I know we have the reports. Have we looked, have we checked them?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's reports that are generated and that are checked, yeah. I mean, in terms of cars that use them and-
Yes.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be through Public Works, Dave? I mean, they do a mileage count.
Right.
I think it's a quarterly, if I'm mistaken. It's quarterly, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me the number of gaming licenses that are currently active in the village?
I thought there were twen-, now, I'm going from memory, so please, I thought there were, they were in 21 establishments, and there were about 96 machines in those 21 establishments. I think that's close.
A little bit over, I think, now.
Machines?
Could be, if we just pass, if we just pass the others, yeah.
Is there a limit to how many you plan to allow?
There's no limit right now, but I made the commitment that all gaming licenses would come here, and we're working with council right now to establish a, a separate liquor license class that would basically include the liquor license component, and there's also some possibility of special use permits for those as well. So, that's, that's a work in progress right now, but yes, there are moves afoot, because I've got to tell you, not, unlike Mr. Bernardi, there, there are a bunch of people in town that are burning a trail to my door to, to do it, and, and I don't know that a cap is necessarily the answer as much as getting the right facilities to have them. And whether you think a car wash should have it, or a laundromat should have it, or a restaurant should have it, you could get different answers for each of those three, and that's, I think that's the challenge that this board faces right now.
As well as, like, proximity to other locations, is that being considered?
That actually was one of the pieces that was discussed, you know, how proximate to each other should they be? How proximate, for instance, to a school should they be? To residential, should you keep them off village streets, for instance? You know, does it make sense to have a gaming, well, that was a conversation we had earlier about 171st and east of Harlem, and, and I just didn't think it was the right place for it. Most of the time, people that do gaming facilities are looking for traffic, because that's, in theory, what drives the, their volume and obviously ultimately profits. So, that's, that's been, you know, part and parcel of what we're looking at.
They're looking for income. I mean, I know business owners that tell me that their business would not keep them with their doors open, it's the gaming that's keeping their doors open.
That's-
So, they're looking for income.
Absolutely right. Nobody's doing it just because they like gaming, they're doing it for the money. And to offset expenses, quite frankly. I mean, some small businesses find that essential to their sustainability.
I, not familiar with the application, but, I mean, is there character issues, legal issues, financial issues that are considered? Somebody's credit, somebody's outstanding, that to other people, that considered when you are considering giving a liquor license?
I know that this, in the case of gaming, the state has a lot of prerogatives to exercise to do those, but there are criminal background checks, there are fingerprinting done, there's, there's all sorts of mechanisms in place to assure that liquor license holders are, you know, reputable.
So, for the gaming licenses, we have part of that, say, and the state does? How does that work?
The, the part that the village controls is the state requires a gaming license to have a liquor license.
Okay.
So, for instance, if I really don't want somebody to have a gaming license, I basically say they don't get a liquor license, and that, that kind of kills it right there.
Got it. Well, I hope that you're being very discriminating about some of the locations and owners that you're giving these licenses out to, on our behalf.
No, we definitely try, and they're, they're-
I might have some concerns with some people that are applying right now.
I mean, they're always personally interviewed, so whether that, you know, gets you to the real answer, who knows?
I don't know. Somebody might be looking at campaign contributions too, so, look out.
Right. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
A few meetings back, I gave you guys-
What?
Oh, I'm sorry. A few meetings back, I gave you guys the award, because we're getting to be the gaming capital of the far south side. Now, if you just do the south side, Oak Lawn has us just a little beat. Now, you had talked about looking at doing a cap in an ordinance. Has that gone anywhere? Is it written anywhere for June or July?
No, that, that whole conversation is part and parcel of what we just spoke about before. It's part of a broader ordinance that would have, you know, a certain number of controls on it. Right now, your, your control is the number of liquor licenses outstanding, so you can't do it unless this board approves it. So, I can't unilaterally say, "You should have a classy liquor license," because right now, I've got, I think, 11 on record, and there are 11 taken, so the only way that there can be an additional one for you would be to come to this board to issue another license. Just, is the, I think, the gentleman that was here a couple days ago with the car wash, and Justice Mr. Bernardi's here tonight with his laundromat, it would require action by the board to incre-, I, I've actually moved to have licenses taken away and off, so that there isn't a pool. I, I want the board to have comment and to have input on those.
Can they have a classy liquor license and not have gaming?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, why can't we get a gaming?
Noodles, noodles is one. Noodles is asked for one, because they're right on Harlem and 159th Street. That's an example of one.
Waiting for that to open. Now, the other question is, is what's happening with the signage? Oak Park Avenue looks horrible. Vegas slots, come here. I mean, there's got to be some mechanism that the slots, that the signage doesn't look so tacky.
That's a good point, and I think as we go through somebody's legacy code conversations, that can be one of the items that's addressed.
Yeah, because I didn't get to update my spreadsheet through April, but I came really close. So, I will be on you guys to get some answers, because-
That's fine.
You know, I mean, no offense, I was really happy to see that one was going on the west side, and you were leaving us alone on the east side, but I don't think they should get stuck with what we have going on and have tacky signs and everything else, so, talk to you at a few meetings.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
The best place to raise your kids. You know, some of you guys beat that to death politically. All you have to do is change around a few things, get us back to the best place to raise your kids, and there's your brand. So, I ask you, put the money back in the general fund.
Thank you.
A few questions that I wanted to ask about the police budget. Going back to February of 2013, The Tribune ran an article where they quoted the police chief. He asked village officials to approve hiring a specialist to review evidence and procedures in the Lane Bryant case, which he characterized as grown cold. Now, in 2000, so, there's a little mistake in the article, I believe, that would have been for fiscal year 2014, and I'm wondering if $10,000 was budgeted for the fiscal 2014 budget?
I don't recall what we did a couple years ago. I don't know if Brad has any recollection or treasure, or if the chief-
I don't recall. How about 2015 budget? Chief, did you ask for $10,000 to have the outside eyes look in?
No, I did not, not for 2015.
2016, 2017 budget?
No, we have not.
Okay, well, with all due respect, it's a little troubling, the timing, 2013, six weeks before an election, a request comes out for $10,000 in the budget on a very heated case, which I think we're all very upset that hasn't been taken care of. Another question, chief, is, this article came out on February 22nd of 2013. I'm sure, I'm sure that you recall, probably about February 15th or 16th, the young lady who was running in the election and I came in and spoke with you, and we talked about individuals, world-renowned experts who are offering the village free help, just like the sheriff offered free help with an investigation or as inspector general. These gentlemen, who maybe you didn't work with because you were up in DuPage County, these were the guys that were the experts from the state police when I was around. This young lady who ran in the election knows them very well from her position as the office administrative assistant in the Bridgeview Courthouse for 30-some-odd years. If I recall correctly, these gentlemen have worked with Scotland Yard, the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, and this help was offered free to take an outside look. Has that been accepted?
The people that you suggested, we did not use that, no. It's still an ongoing investigation, and we still have two investigators working on it and looking at it from all aspects.
And I understand that, but in 2013, it was listed as being cold. You're being offered free help, it's a big deal, six weeks before an election, and nothing has happened since. I think that's a little troubling. Mayor, chief, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Hiss. I've been a resident of the Tinley Park area now for the last eight years, and I want to start off by, first of all, thanking you gentlemen for putting up with all of our public commentary. I know it's kind of a thankless job, but we do appreciate what it is you guys are doing. I do have a couple of quick questions, though, regarding our Oak Park Avenue development. I know a while back, when I first moved into Tinley, Tinley had purchased land near the Oak Park Avenue train station. I believe they bought the Ice House and a few other property, residential properties in that area. They've since demolished those properties, and I was originally told that they were going to be building these new developmental properties on that land. I was wondering, what is your current position on that land? Are we going to actually see something?
I'm not sure who should answer that fully. I think, as Trustee Vandenberg stated earlier, each year's planning, there are three developments in the hopper for that area right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as the acquisition of those properties you're speaking about, I, I, being a part of the board for one of them, I made a statement at that time that this, this board and the village is in no position to be landowners. But we, at the time, and still currently, feel that if we're able to acquire some property and pitch it to one development team, we have a better opportunity of developing something that's going to be to, to, to the liking of the community, as opposed to separating multiple parcels. So, that was kind of our philosophy there. I could tell you, currently, there are some, there are some proposals that have been submitted to the village. They're, they're in extreme draft form, and staff, as well as myself and some of the other colleagues here on the board, are, are taking some time and investigating all of our options for that. I think it's, it's kind of exciting, it's exciting news, because it's a parcel of town that has been so, so cold, I think was the previous word used, just so cold and stagnant. So, it's, it's exhilarating a little bit to see some, some life kind of go into that area, so, I think that kind of answers your question.
No, I appreciate that. I was just wondering, because I hadn't heard any comment regarding that particular area during this, this, this meeting, and I wanted to make sure that it was going to be addressed at some point. I also want to make a couple of quick comments, that I do love that you guys, at the beginning of this meeting, were recognizing some young active citizens in our community. That was fantastic. I also want to thank our local fire and police departments as well, because, it's because of you guys that we are actually safe and are able to make these types of commentary at this type of events, and thank you, sir, for your ability of help as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hiss. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. I have a question about the, what the status of hiring the new fire chief is. I know it was asked at the last meeting, and it seemed like the answer was kind of vague and evasive, and mayor, you had mentioned that you were going to be convening a panel of local fire chiefs and a retired marshal, and I was wondering what the status of that process was.
We had that meeting probably three or four weeks ago, and in fact, just earlier today, the chairman of public safety, TJ Grady, and I met with the village manager and the HR director to discuss process to, to go about the recruitment.
Okay.
So, that, that's underway. It will, you know, begin shortly. The chief, as you know, retires June 30th-
Right.
And will, in all likelihood, be appointing an interim chief to serve in that capacity until the-
Because I noticed that it hasn't been posted anywhere, or there's no recruitment has been started, as of yet?
Well, that's what we were actually just finalizing today, I think. So, there's a proposal that will come to the public safety committee shortly, and they'll be reviewing it.
Any chance that, like, people from the public can participate in that process?
Um, you'll be kept-
Or just attending the committee meetings?
You're more than welcome to attend the public safety committee meeting, where it'll be discussed, and absolutely.
Okay.
It's an open meeting, and you're welcome to comment as well.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, we had somebody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Just the, two things. The first is, in kind of response to what Trent had talked about earlier, I have asked you twice at two different meetings, that a citizen panel be put together for when the sheriff does reveal his investigation.
I mean, I don't think there's going to be a citizen.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see it. You'll see the report. I don't know what more there is.
No, and I understand, but this was just a comment to, to say that you have twice said to me, when I've asked for that, that you would reveal that. That, that's all.
I believe I said that.
No, I know you did. That's what I'm just saying, is he was asking about that, and I had asked you twice, and you did say twice that, once the details are given to you, that you will-
Absolutely.
-let us know about that. The other point I'd like to make is, we keep reading in the newspaper about the Howe Center, and, you know, on COTP, I'm sure you all have read, many on there feel that a multi-sportsplex would be just incredibly beneficial to our town. What I'd like to do is ask each of you now, individually, to answer, what would you like to see? Mr. Mayor, I've read in the paper a number of times that you have said that you want homes and townhomes?
I think-
I just would like to know what everybody would like.
...the most probable and the most likely of things to be developed there, but I, if financially viable and feasible, I would not be opposed to a sportsplex either. I mean, I think that this board in its entirety is open to all possibilities there, it's just that I don't believe that this village board is ready to commit a flow of revenues to support and subsidize. That, that's my only concern about- That, that's my only concern about any development that goes there, is that I don't think, I think the free market should, should rule, and that's the way that I think it ought to be financed, whatever it is.
Well, there's a number of different ways for it to be financed. It's not, it doesn't just all have to come from the village.
But I just don't want to see it result in subsidies from the village that's better.
Okay. Can I ask the rest of you how you feel about it?
I'm happy to talk about it. I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, and Trustee Vandenberg could probably address this a little bit better, but I think FAR has been tasked with considering that, that whole concept of a sportsplex, or whatever. But some of what's been discussed about the citizens' desires, one of the things that's been brought forth by Mike, Matt Coughlin and Brogan, is the Westfield, Indiana model. I don't agree with that model as a possibility for our development there. That model involves 400 acres of property that produce $0. The city pays for all of that land. What they don't pay for, their leasing, the, the indoor facility that was built there is being paid for by the residents. What was established there was a TIF district that the concept is, all of these people coming into town will, will be looking for places to stay, looking for places to eat, looking for things to do. The problem is, none of that's happened yet. That TIF district is not throwing off any money, so the village of Westfield is carrying over $60 million of debt on that project. It may very well be a successful project down the road, but at this point, the commitment they've made of taxpayer dollars to that project is not something I could support in Tinley Park. Now, what I would like to see there, I think, the area around the, the train station begs for transit-oriented development. We've got a beautiful, large train station that can, that can be an asset to, to that type of a development over there. We also have the library within close proximity on the Freedom Park. I think that section of it should be developed in a transit-oriented development manner. I think the majority of the site, from the consultants we've talked to, and from what we know of the differential of taxes between Orland Township and Rich Township, and the availability of economic incentives such as Class 8, which is not available in Orland Township, that makes that commercial development a tougher sell there. I think the consultants that we've talked to have indicated that the site will probably support a certain amount of commercial, but to expect an exceptional amount of commercial development on that site probably is unrealistic. There are other concepts, such as an outlet mall, that's been discussed. We certainly are considering that. We actually have a prospect for that you may have heard about, but it wouldn't be in that location, because it would be in a location where we can do more for them in terms of incentives, like a Rich Township location where you have Class 8 available, for example. We're not, I'm not close to any concepts, but I'm not willing to make the kind of a commitment that Westfield did in Tinley Park. I don't think our taxpayers want to be on the line for that kind of money on a 20- to 30-year possible payoff.
And I understand that, but there are, there are other complexes where the developer is the one who puts more out of the money out than the village--
That's great, if you can find it, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm saying the Westfield model, no.
Maybe not that one, but there are other, and I have been in some state-of-the-art complex centers.
Bring them in.
From, from playing to coaching to reffing to watching my grandkids, I have been in some of the state-of-the-art across this country, and there's a lot of different complexes.
Bring that information to the meeting, to us and to FAR.
Okay.
I mean, we're considering, that's why we're having these open forums and encouraging citizen input. I was criticized by somebody on social media, because I made a comment that we don't want just a bunch of 50-year-old and ups opinions. I thought it was clear that I'm over 50, so I was, it was somewhat self-deprecating.
Well, you're going to get this over 50's opinion out of it, I guarantee you that.
But my, my point is that we're trying to open up the process to everybody and to get as much input as we can from all, from all demographic age groups in, in the community. And hopefully, you know, these kinds of ideas that you have, if we, if there are private developers who want to come up and are willing not to ask the village to, to put the whole cost of this thing on the taxpayers, that's great. Love to look at it.
Well, just with all due respect, it just seems that there are some that only want homes and townhomes on that site.
I think there's, I think there's probably not so much that that's what we want, it's what we've been told is the most feasible and logical and doable development. It's not to say that--[1036.08][1036.08][laughter] Pardon me? If you have something to say, you can come up to the comment section. Don't just talk out of turn, please. Again, we're, we're open to that, it's just, the plan has to work.
Okay. Can I ask the rest of you how you feel? What you'd like to see there? What, what is your vision?
Well, I, I think, first off, to kind of piggyback off of the last comments that Trustee Maher just made, if you feel, or if anybody else feels that this board only wanted residential, I would suggest that they go back a year and look at how this board voted about hiring FAR associates and opening it up and requiring it to be a public forum. Up until that point, this, the previous board had none of that, a part of their schemes and plans, that they were, you know, producing over the last year and a half before that. So I think what you're seeing is this board understanding that the public input is more important than anything that I'm going to say, or anybody else in this board. It's not, you know, as a resident, certainly I have a vision, but I, I mean, I have no, as a board member, I have no, I mean, I'm in favor of whatever the, the community wants. I, I have nothing specific. If analysis and market studies show that a sports complex is going to be a viable option for that piece of property, and the village is not going to be fronting any money, I have no problem with it. I've got young kids, I want them to be in, you know, sports as well. I, I invite everybody to attend. We have steering committees, it's a panel of people, we, we have these exact conversations. The meeting that we had two weeks ago, we had a very in-depth discussion about where is the analysis on this multi-sports complex? Okay? You know, I, I think that we need to have concrete evidence that it will show that, that there's money that will be able to be made if it's going to be publicly funded, of which I don't think that's what we need to do. I, I would much rather prefer it to be a private development. You know, as you were saying, there are sports complexes, but I am not certain that, you know, in that industry, and I'm, I'm not an expert there, but I would find it that you can't be placing these things just everywhere, because they're going to saturate themselves out. I mean, I, as a private, as a business owner, I would, I would see that being an issue. So I think that we, you know, continue this analysis with, with the experts that we have hired, and continue to listen to what the public has to say about what they feel is, you know, important to them, and move forward. I mean, I, I, I think that's absolutely critical. I've been saying that for a year, and I'll say it for the next year if I have to.
And I, and I wasn't stating that everyone felt that way about homes and townhomes.
Yeah, I was just making a, I was making a statement in general.
That in newspaper articles where I've read, that that seemed to be what the mayor was pushing for, was homes and townhomes.
It's the most likely, based upon market study. I mean, I, I mean, there, there's been, I know it's hard for everyone to understand that, but the, the information that's been provided via the open public forums, as well as the steering committee, the analysis coming out, I mean, the divide between Cook County and Will County is a huge issue, and it's, I never, I never really understood it fully myself. I have a business in Cook County, Orland Township, on Harlem Avenue. I understand taxes, okay? I, I wasn't, you know, in, in my, my, to be personal here, we've been, we've been able to sustain. We, we know the taxes, that's, but I have a location, and that's, that's just what it is. I build it into my business model. But when you have something that's on the corner, 15, 20 feet away is Will County, and your taxes are 50% less, it is, I mean, it's not even a question. So I mean, there's a lot, I mean, we really have to look at that. That's an issue. It's a huge issue.
But if it's hundreds of millions of dollars in profit, it's not as big a question.
But the analysis that's being brought back to us, and, and I'll just use a general figure, I think 13 to 14 different multiplex facilities have already been analyzed and have showed no profits. In fact, they're in the red. You know, the only, the only model that obviously has been the topic of discussion is this Westfield is showing to be profitable. But even those numbers are maybe skewed, as Trustee Maher pointed out.
How, how old are the complexes? I mean, you're not going to see an initial profit, of course, for, for a number of years. That will come at a later date. So I mean, are we looking short-term for this, or are we looking at the big picture? Sometimes we need to think outside the box.
I'd appreciate you joining us at this meeting and, and these kinds of conversations that we had, that, because you'll have the subject matter experts there. None of us on the panel are. Doug FAR is. He'll be able to tell you, you know, and I think, give you far more information that you're going to get from, from us who are--
I don't know--
You know, basically, just students.
There's a, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mayor--
No, go ahead.
But the, the, the previous public forum has a video, I believe there's a video on the village YouTube page, if I'm not mistaken, about the subject matter expert providing the analysis, and, and basically giving you the general synopsis of the market study that he's been able to provide to this point. Now, he's been given direction to do a little bit more research and homework. Trustee Grady and myself have both given that direction, so there's going to be a lot more information that's going to be provided to the steering committee, as well as to the residents, via our public forums. So I, again, I'll invite, it's, it's available. Come out there, it's, it's, you can ask questions, you can make statements, you can learn some things that are going to, you know, just as much as I'm learning as I'm going along. So I really do, and I mean, please, come to that. It's, it's a great tool.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Trustee Grady, I'm Mike. The, has there been any progress with the, the fire chief search? Are you, are we--
Yeah, I believe that was asked earlier and answered.
I wasn't here, probably.
Oh, okay.
Can you give you the short version, then?
Yes. We, we met earlier today, and we're moving forward. We're going to name an interim chief after Chief Dunn retires at the end of June, hopefully having the new chief in place sometime in the fall.
Can you say who the interim will be, or no?
No, because we don't know ourselves yet.
You're still discussing--
Yep.
Okay. And then, question for the Mayor Seaman.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain, again, the, the gaming license? Do you have to have the license from the gaming board before you apply at the village?
You have to have the liquor li-- well, I think the liquor license is required to go to the gaming board, so you cannot go to the gaming board for your machines until you have a liquor license from the municipality. As I understand it--
That's correct. So--
The normal format is liquor license, state board, then you get your state gaming license, you come back. If a town has a village video gaming license, this town does.
Okay, so you'll open up as the, just as the liquor license, and then, as your business is open, then you apply for the gaming?
It's usually-- Yeah, it's usually the same thing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I believe there is an exception if you're a, regarding the video gaming. If you're a truck stop or fueling station, you sell over 10,000 gallons of fuel a month, you do not need a liquor license for the video gaming. And on that note, out of curiosity, with the expansion on item number nine for the Speedway gas station, are they applying for video gaming?
I don't, I mean, if my memory serves me correctly, during the conversations, we, we told them that they were, would not be able to apply. Is that what I remember? And that was part of an agreement we made.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's kind of, it's kind of late, so it's going to be really quick. I just actually wanted to give Trustee Vandenberg a chance to give some of the timeline and dates for the, for the steering committee and the, I know June 1st is a big public meeting, and I just want to echo your comments about people coming out, and I know there is a number of concept plans. And for that meeting in particular, where that's going to be discussed, are those plans going to be distributed publicly in advance of that? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shaw. That's a great point. I should've said the dates. Thanks for the clarification. I, to my knowledge, and TJ, if you could help me out here, we were talking about this prior to the meeting, there is a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes.
It's a steering, a steering committee meeting--
Yeah.
--which will be at the Calson Center and at Village Hall. The, I'm not certain that the next community meeting forum has been scheduled yet.
It hasn't, because we wanted to take some time to take a look at the whole--
Right.
--concept that was being discussed, and so the June 1st meeting is not going to happen.
The brief synopsis being, that at the previous steering committee, there was, there's some more direction given to the market team, as well as FAR and associates, to, to give us a little, a little bit more in-depth commerce, you know, analysis on the, the sports complex. So that was going to be presented again at the steering committee of this following Tuesday, and then, at that night, we would set a date for the following community meeting, which will be obviously posted, as well as, there will be a mailing that will be, a postcard will be sent out as well. That, I'm assuming that's going to be in sometime in, probably the middle of June, I would anticipate, maybe end of June.
Yeah, we're working on it. We're having some scheduling issues with--
Going, going back a year ago, our, our calendar has shifted a little bit. We're, this is going a little bit longer than anticipated, but I think delaying it or, or doing it the right way is more important than, than trying to run it through, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the following. A, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. B, the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. C, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And D, litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. May I have an impairing motion?
Sure, move it.
Second.
Movement second, and Mr. Clerk, I believe you have to call the roll on us.
Roll call, adjourning to executive session. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
I said yes.
Okay. Trustee Youngblood.
Yes.
And our newest trustee, are you prepared to vote?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carried. We don't expect there to be any announcements at the end of this meeting, so, thank you. Have a good evening.